I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. Welcome to the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting of October 20th, 2025. The year is almost over. That went very, very quick. This meeting has been properly noticed according to the OPMA in all the appropriate places and forums. And with that, I will leave it off to Madam Chairwoman.
We'll have any attendance roll call, please.
Mr. Bressey.
Here.
Ms. Marzo.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Tremmer.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Weingart.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here. Payment voucher recording secretary motion, please.
So moved, Sullivan.
Second, Bressey.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressey.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. Approval of the minutes for September 8th regular meeting. We need a motion, please.
So moved, Sullivan.
Second, Rogers.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. Resolution? Resolution?
Resolution 2025-25 of the Planning Board of the Township of Jack-- of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval for a two-story house of worship for congregation Brookwood, Inc., Block 7702, Lot 17. Eligible to vote are Mr. Rogers, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Need a motion, please?
So moved, Sullivan.
Only one person can second. There are only three of us.
Okay. Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. And I want to congratulate our attorney. We are now 100% up to date with resolutions. Very well done. We have some changes to the schedule. Application Block 4404, Lot 1 and 3 for Applegate Owner LLC is carried to November 17th, 2025, with no further notice required. We'll vote on that.
I'll make a-- I'll make a motion to approve the moving of Block 4404, Lots 1 and 3, Applegate Owner LLC to November 17th, 2025. Sullivan.
Second, Bressey.
Mr. Bressey.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell. Yes. Application for Block 3902, Lot 58 for Bellevue Estates LLC is withdrawn per the applicant's request. I don't think we need to vote on that. We'll just say all in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Okay. Board matters for discussion.
None at this time.
Ordinance? Is that ordinance?
Aye, because on the next meeting.
Oh, we moved it? It was here.
It's Ordinance 2025-35?
It was-- yeah, we all received it.
Yep.
Here it is. Here it is.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I might--
Appreciate it.
The governing body has introduced on first reading Ordinance 2025-35 an ordinance amending Chapter 244, which is our land use ordinance, and it's been referred to the Planning Board for comment. This one is fairly straightforward. This board just proposed new land use regulations for the municipality as part of their master plan amendment. And the governing body took action on those recommendations. Now statutorily, they still need to refer it back to the board for a finding of consistency from the board. So individual board members who may not have been familiar with master plan amendments that this board undertook the last two years would be happy to answer some questions regarding it. But otherwise, this falls straight out of the master plan amendment that this board approved a few months back.
And this is relating to the affordable housing requirements, correct?
Correct.
Any questions from the board? We'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Sullivan.
We'll vote on that, please.
Just to be clear, it's a motion to determine that it's not inconsistent--
It's not inconsistent.
Okay. Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. All right, let's see. Any engineering matters? Any planning matters?
Okay.
All righty. And we'll move to our application.
You know what, Madam Chair, there's one legal issue--
Okay.
Just to make sure the board is aware, I have the appellate argument on Bias Yakov along with Mrs. Jennings on the 20--
Ms.
Miss Jennings on the 29th of this month, and I will-- Well, typically, there's a written opinion that happens once it gets to the appellate division. So I'll keep the board in the loop as to any determination that's made.
Thank you. Okay, move ahead.
Yep.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a three-story professional office building on property located at 1154 East Veterans Highway, identified as Block 21301, Lot 12 on the township's tax maps. The property is approximately 1.68 acres, located in the highway commercial zone, and is currently improved with a one-story dentist office building. The new proposed office building will be comprised of medical, dental offices, and other general office uses. Ordinance Section 244-57A provides that professional office is a permitted use in the HC zone. Professional office is further defined in the ordinance as, quote, "the office of a member of a recognized profession, which shall include but is not limited to the offices of doctors or physicians, dentists, insurance agents, optometrists, architects, landscaped architects, professional engineers, land surveyors, professional planners, lawyers, attorneys-- you use the word twice-- accountants, and real estate brokers," close quote. Thus, medical and dental offices are encompassed within the definition of professional office, and the proposed use is permitted, and we are properly before this board. Similarly, business and commercial offices are also permitted. As will be discussed more thoroughly by the applicant's site engineer, the proposed professional office building will be comprised of approximately 41,000 square feet across three floors. Parking will be provided via a surface-level parking area as well as a subsurface parking garage. Notably, the applicant proposes a total of 184 parking spaces, 20 of which will be EV-made-ready. Therefore, the ordinance's parking requirement is met, and no relief is required with respect to same. The applicant is seeking one bulk variance from Ordinance Section 244-57D with respect to the minimum number of-- no, with respect to the minimum parking area setback from a residential use, whereas 20 feet is required, and the applicant proposing 10 feet on one side. As will be discussed by the applicant's planner, the record will show that the applicant satisfies both the positive and negative criteria for the granting of the variance. In addition, there are several design waivers that the applicant is seeking, which will be more thoroughly discussed by the site engineer and the planner. In support of the application, we will be calling the following witnesses this evening: Yahuda Back, the site engineer; Lou Stelmar Rosado, the architect; John Ray, our traffic engineer; and Andrew Janu, our professional planner. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant is in receipt of the following review letters from the board's professionals. The fire department's review letter dated June 12th, 2025; traffic safety unit review letter dated July 29th, 2025; board engineer's review letter dated October 7th, 2025; and board planner's review dated October 14th, 2025. With that, we could call up our first witness. And it's very, very bright up here. I don't know what you guys did with the lighting.
They've adjusted the lighting. At least we can now see what we're looking at here.
I can see the halo over your head. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Yahuda Back, B-A-C-K, Licensed Professional Engineer in the State of New Jersey.
If you could keep your microphone up because this is being recorded, thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
And if you could, just for the benefit of the board, give your background and qualifications.
Sure. So I started working with New lines engineering in 2017, which is also when I started college right here in Ocean County. From there, I transferred to NJIT in Newark. I graduated in August of 2021 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. After that, I received my PE license--
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. Approval of the minutes for September 8th, regular meeting. We need a motion, please.
Some moves, Sullivan.
Second Rogers.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chimer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell.
Yes. Resolution? Resolution?
Resolution 2025-25 of the Planning Board of the Township of Jack- of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval for a two-story house of worship for congregation Brookwood, Inc., Block 7702, Lot 17. Eligible to vote are Mr. Rogers, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Need a motion, please?
Some moves, Sullivan.
Only one person can second. There are only three of us.
Okay. Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes, and I want to congratulate our attorney. We are now 100% up to date with resolutions. Very well done. We have some changes to the schedule. Application Block 4404, Lot 1 and 3 for Applegate Owner LLC is carried to November 17th, 2025, with no further notice required. We'll vote on that.
I'll make a- I'll make a motion to approve the moving of Block 4404, Lots 1 and 3, Applegate Owner LLC, to November 17th, 2025. Sullivan.
Second, Bressey.
Mr. Bressey.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chimer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. Application for Block 3902, Lot 58, for Bellevue Estates LLC, is withdrawn per the applicant's request. I don't think we need to vote on that. We'll just say all in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Board matters for discussion.
None at this time.
Ordinance? Is that ordinance? Oh, we moved it? It was here.
It's Ordinance 2025-35?
It was, yeah, we all received it.
Yep.
Here it is.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I might.
Appreciate it.
The governing body has introduced on first reading Ordinance 2025-35, an ordinance amending Chapter 244, which is our land use ordinance, and it's been referred to the Planning Board for comment. This one is fairly straightforward. This board just proposed new land use regulations for the municipality as part of their master plan amendment, and the governing body took action on those recommendations. Now statutorily, they still need to refer it back to the board for a finding of consistency from the board. So, individual board members who may not have been familiar with master plan amendments that this board undertook the last two years, be happy to answer some questions regarding it, but otherwise, this falls straight out of the master plan amendment that this board approved a few months back.
And this is relating to the affordable housing requirements, correct? Correct. Any questions from the board? We'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Sullivan.
We'll vote on that, please.
Just to be clear, it's a motion to determine that it's not inconsistent with the master-
It's not inconsistent. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chimer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
As it is not inconsistent with the master plan, yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. All right. Let's see. Any engineering matters? Any planning matters? Okay. All righty. And we'll move to our application.
You know what, Madam Chair, there's one legal issue. Just to make sure the board is aware, I have the appellate argument on Bias Yakov along with Mrs. Jennings on the 20-
Ms.
Miss Jennings.
Ms.
On the 29th of this month, and I will, well, typically, there's a written opinion that happens once it gets to the appellate division, so I'll keep the board in the loop as to any determination that's made.
Thank you. Okay, move ahead.
Yep.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a three-story professional office building on property located at 1154 East Veterans Highway, identified as Block 21301, Lot 12 on the township's tax maps. The property is approximately 1.68 acres, located in the highway commercial zone, and is currently improved with a one-story dentist office building. The new proposed office building will be comprised of medical dental offices and other general office uses. Ordinance Section 244-57A provides that professional office is a permitted use in the HC zone. Professional office is further defined in the ordinance as, quote, "the office of a member of a recognized profession, which shall include but is not limited to the offices of doctors or physicians, dentists, insurance agents, optometrist, architects, landscaped architects, professional engineers, land surveyors, professional planners, lawyers, attorneys, you used the word twice, accountants, and real estate brokers," close quote. Thus, medical and dental offices are encompassed within the definition of professional office, and the proposed use is permitted, and we are properly before this board. Similarly, business and commercial offices are also permitted. As will be discussed more thoroughly by the applicant's site engineer, the proposed professional office building will be comprised of approximately 41,000 square feet across three floors. Parking will be provided via a surface-level parking area as well as a subsurface parking garage. Notably, the applicant proposes a total of 184 parking spaces, 20 of which will be EV-made ready. Therefore, the ordinance's parking requirement is met, and no relief is required with respect to same. The applicant is seeking one bulk variance from Ordinance Section 244-57D with respect to the minimum number of, no, with respect to the minimum parking area setback from a residential use, whereas 20 feet is required, and the applicant's proposing 10 feet on one side. As will be discussed by the applicant's planner, the record will show that the applicant satisfies both the positive and negative criteria for the granting of the variance. In addition, there are several design waivers that the applicant is seeking, which will be more thoroughly discussed by the site engineer and the planner. In support of the application, we will be calling the following witnesses this evening: Yahuda Bak, the site engineer; Lou Stelmar Rosado, the architect; John Ray, our traffic engineer; and Andrew Janu, our professional planner. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant is in receipt of the following review letters from the board's professionals. The fire department's review letter dated June 12th, 2025; Traffic Safety Unit Review Letter dated July 29th, 2025; Board Engineers Review Letter dated October 7th, 2025; and Board Planner's Review dated October 14th, 2025. With that, we could call up our first witness. And it's very, very bright up here. I don't know what you guys did with the lighting.
They've adjusted the lighting. At least we can now see what we're looking at here.
I can see the halo over your head. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and spell your last with a record.
Yahuda Bak, B-A-C-K, Licensed Professional Engineer in the State of New Jersey.
If you could keep your microphone up because this is being recorded, thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
And if you could, just for the benefit of the board, give your background and qualifications. Sure. So, I started working with Newlands Engineering in 2017, which is also when I started college right here in Ocean County. From there, I transferred to NJIT in Newark. I graduated in August of 2021 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. After that, I received my PE license in July of 2023, and since then have been testifying throughout New Jersey, including in front of this board.
Welcome. We approve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so for the benefit of the board, just confirm that your office prepared the plans, the site plans? Yes, they're prepared under my direction. And if you could describe the site and the rear area surrounding the site, and if you're going to rely on any exhibits, can we please mark them and identify them for the record? Yes, so we have a few exhibits. Exhibit A1 is an aerial view. Exhibit A2 is our drainage plan. Exhibit A3 is a color rendering of the site. Exhibit A4 are the architectural plans. Exhibit A5 is a layout sheet of our plans. Exhibit A6 is the cover sheet of our plans. Exhibit A7 is an architectural exhibit, and Exhibit A8 is the planner's aerial exhibit. Okay, and that's all previously submitted to the township, so they'll be up on the board when we get to them.
After the hearing, you just email me that list, and then we can-
You got it, not a problem. All right, why don't you start with describing the site and the surrounding area, and just when you're relying on the exhibit, just tell us which one we're looking at. Okay. So, the property is located at 1154 East Veterans Highway, identified as Block 21301, Lot 12, contains approximately 1.68 acres. We are located in the highway commercial or HC zone, and current, the site is currently improved with a one-story dentist's office. Anthony, can you please pull up Exhibit A1? That's our aerial. Oh, we got it. He's beat me to it.
Beat you to it.
On this exhibit, north is directly up. The site itself is marked in black, you can see it. The surrounding areas, to the north, we have, it's commercial use, we have the Liberty Common Shopping Center or Isle 9 supermarket. Further north, we have a few residential homes, and in addition to Jackson Liberty High School. On the top right or northeast side of this exhibit, you can see, I believe it's Pride Parkway that leads to the school. To the south of us, we have some commercial uses, Jackson Crossing, well, really, their basin is south of us. We have some residential further to the south, in addition to the McAlliff Middle School. Directly to the east of our site, we have two residential lots. One of them I'm trying to circle is just up here, and the other one is along the rest of our site. To the west of us, there's a small strip that contains a paint store and a pizza shop, amongst other things, and that's the surrounding areas. Our proposal is we are seeking approval for preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a three-story, 40,670-square-foot professional office building. The building footprint itself is small, it's 3,652 square feet, whereas the second and third floor are approximately 18,000 square feet each. The reason for this is, the first floor is at grade level, is mostly parking. You have a small lobby kind of in the center of the building, surrounding it on the great at grade is parking, and then the second and third stories are the offices. For parking, as I just mentioned, we do have a combination of surface parking with a subsurface parking structure. So, I spoke about what's at grade. That's the first floor is a lobby and some surface parking. Second floor is office space, third story is office space, and then subsurface, we have a parking garage. Anthony, you know what, can you please pull up Exhibit A5? That's our layout sheet. So, the big, the big part of the exhibit, again, north is up over here, along the top is East Veterans Highway. This is our site, and then this small boxton area is the subsurface parking structure. So, here on our site, you're looking at the at-grade portion of the building. This boxton area is the lobby, and then you'll have what's called under the building, but not subsurface, it's at-grade parking over here. Towards the rear, you have a driveway that's going down to the subsurface parking. Once you're down there, it looks like this. We have a bunch of parking down here, and then there are just stairs at the subsurface level, and the architect will speak more towards that. For parking, we have a total of 184 physical spaces are proposed, 130 of those are provided at grade level, 54 of them are provided in the subsurface garage. So, 203 spaces are required, starting, once we have the EV credit, now we're required to have 183, we're providing 184, so one extra space provided. The building's operations, the building will accommodate both medical and general professional office uses. The existing dental office use will remain, and there will be two additional unassociated dental or medical practitioners. The hours of operation are normal business hours, Monday through Friday, though tenants will be permitted to have 24-hour secure access to the building. The number of employees present in the building will vary according to the various needs of the prospective tenants. Property maintenance, including landscaping and snow removal, will be provided by an outside vendor. Deliveries will consist of primarily UPS-style shipments for packaging and other supplies. I could point out the loading area for those trucks, staging areas, the striped portion of the parking lot. Trash will be picked up on an as-needed basis. Any medical waste will be disposed of in accordance with state law. As was mentioned, we are seeking one variance with this application, and that's from minimum parking area setback from residential use. 20 feet is required, whereas 10 is proposed, and I'll point that out on this exhibit. As we said, this is one residential lot on the right side, northeast side of our site, and then this is another one. We would be required 20 feet separation to these parking spaces, and we're proposing 10. That is the sole variance requested with this application. There are some design waivers, all of them are pretty much for the design of the parking lot. Number one, parking areas must have at least three contiguous parking stalls, whereas we have a few areas that have less than three. At the surface level, we have one area up on the northeast corner of the parking lot. We have two spaces, and then some striping, and then the rest of the spaces. They're not really in line, so we are requesting the design waiver for this. You really need three spaces in a row, and we have two. And then the subsurface garage, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can see it on this, but I'll try to point it out, we have one space here, one isolated space, one more isolated space there, and then two spaces there. And on the subsurface garage, that's a function of the location of the columns that are holding up the building, so where you have space, you put a parking space, and if there's a column, you don't put a parking space. Additional design waiver we are proposing, we are requesting is entrance driveways shall extend 100 feet from the street right away or parking access aisle or major circulation drive, whereas about 50 feet is proposed on this entrance driveway. That's this throat portion would need to be 100 for the entrance, and we're proposing about 50, and similarly, as an exit, it would need to be 60 feet long, whereas for us, it's about 45. In addition, no parking aisle is supposed to utilize entrance or exit drives, whereas our entrance and exit drive goes all the way down, and we are utilizing it for parking. And lastly, landscape parking island width 10 feet is required, whereas in this parking island in the rear of the site, there's two locations where it's less than, less than 10 feet wide. There were some changes that we made to the plan, minor changes. Originally, we had designed it with the driveway on the east, along East Veterans, we designed it on the east side of the site, the driveway right in this location. After consultation with the Ocean County Engineering and the Township Traffic Safety Unit, we moved it to the west so that as not to interfere with the driveway across the street and any turning into either driveway. And then another change we made was, there are some dead-end parking areas, really on this surface parking lot, and those areas will be used solely by employees, so that they don't, you don't have people pulling in and backing out of a parking lot. For grading, Anthony, can you please pull up Exhibit A2? A2 is our drainage plan. Thank you. The site, as is today, slopes from East Veterans Highway southwards or from top to bottom of the site, north to south, and that's what we are proposing as well, and it has slopes of between 2% and 5%, which is typical. For utilities, there is public water fronting the site where a connection is proposed. For sanitary sewer, there's a sanitary mantle in East Veterans Highway fronting the Jackson Crossing Shopping Center, that's to the west of us, again, where a sanitary connection is proposed. With regard to drainage facilities, we are proposing two subsurface infiltration basins, one for the rear of the site that's going to capture all the stormwater from all the parking areas, and then the north of, the north of the site, we're proposing one drainage system to capture the roof of the building. Both of these systems are subsurface basins where there are pipes underneath the ground, you wouldn't see them. Pretreatment is to be provided in the form of MTDs. Now, the plans currently show, the plans in front of you currently show a surface bio-basin over here on the, towards the middle of the site on the east side. That bio-basin, the township engineer brought up a concern that about its proximity to the subsurface parking structure, we are, we are not proposing that anymore. In place of that, we will be proposing an MTD instead of that bio-basin, so all we'd be left with is the two subsurface basins, and above ground would be an MTD, which from the ground looks like an inlet or a catch basin.
I'm sorry, what is an MTD?
Manufacture Treatment Device. It provides pretreatment for the stormwater, specifically the stormwater that lands on the parking lot, captures oils and things like that. So, the state regulation requires us to do pretreatment before the water goes into these subsurface drainage basins, just to treat it a little bit. An additional change, again, based on my conversation with the township engineer, this subsurface infiltration basin is conflicting with the subsurface parking garage, so we will be moving it, instead of along the front over here, it'll be along this access aisle. So, it's the same exact basin, but instead of it being under the ground over here, it would be under the ground over here. For lighting, we will comply with the township ordinance, and should shielding be necessary, it will be provided. With regard to landscaping, replacement trees-
Excuse me, that won't be a question, it'll be provided.
Okay. Will do.
And just in regards to the changes on the plan, so let's make it a condition of approval that you'll make the changes, supply it to our experts so that they can review.
Absolutely. Yes, a shielding will be provided. With regard to landscaping, again, it's, the site, specifically the rear of the site is currently wooded, we are providing replacement trees as required by the ordinance. Additionally, Anthony, can you please pull up Exhibit A3? This is a color rendering of the site. Thank you. In addition to the replacement trees, we are providing a buffer of evergreen trees on the east side of the site, along the entire east side of the site, between our commercial use and the residential uses on that side. We did have an arborist perform a tree survey to identify the existing trees and determine the required number of replacement trees. In addition, as always, we will work with the township forester, as I have in the past. And lastly, with regard to landscaping, there are no foundation plantings proposed because there is no space for those, since the foundation, small portion of the building over here is surrounded by parking, it's concrete or asphalt. With regard to soil erosion and sediment control, it's a typical plan, we have a stabilized construction entrance in the location of the future driveway and a soil stockpile in the rear. For site circulation, currently, the plans do not show a sidewalk along the frontage of East Veterans, though we will be providing one. We will be putting in sidewalk. ADA accessibility is provided from the ADA parking spaces to the building on site. The location of the enclosed refuse area will not interfere with circulation or with parking. There was some talk about a second point of access, in addition to this one driveway we have, there was some talk about adding a driveway. This is not necessary, nor is it feasible, without interfering with the access drive on the other side of the street with the Liberty Common Shopping Center. Lastly, Newlands has provided the board with an abbreviated environmental impact statement, since the site does not contain any environmental constraints like wetlands, streams, et cetera. Other than that, I have gone through the board's professionals' letters, and we will comply with their comments.
I'm a little concerned about the 10 feet and the impact on the neighbors, not so much the commercial neighbors, but the residential neighbors. Is there an opportunity to perhaps put up some fencing there to lessen the impact of car lights?
For sure, for sure, and we would, we'd probably, if the neighbors are here and they would like a fence better than an evergreen offer, we'd do that and put some landscaping along.
Don't we do both?
You want to do both?
Well, have trees and have fencing that blocks those lights, those car lights, that's a concern.
Yeah, we can do that.
That would be a condition, then.
Okay.
Any, any other questions on the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chimer.
So, my first question's going to be, what is your fire protection plan going to be for the sub-garage?
I think it's a question for the architect, but I believe there's sprinklers down.
Okay. And as far as the environmental impact statement, is the only reason you're trying to submit a abbreviated EIS is because of the lack of impact, you're saying?
Correct, and if you go through it, it's pretty much a full.
I understand, I understand, I just, I just want to make sure that, because it is over 20,000 square foot, right?
Correct.
So, shouldn't there be a full because of that?
Yeah, this is standard, I mean, if you go through, you'll see, it goes through the full list in saying how there's nothing to be, there's no environmental constraints or anything on.
I do know that there is a tributary on the, on the south side of that section right there, so that's why I was just being a little more specific towards that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marzo.
I'm sorry, I don't, I really don't understand the location for the subsurface parking. I see it on the side, and I'm, I apologize, but I'm kind of confused, I'm not seeing it here.
No, no, you're good, I'll try to, I'll try to point it out. Anthony, can we pull up, let's pull up Exhibit A5? I think that might be the clearest. Okay, so, right, where I'm pointing right now, this is the at-grade, what you look at, at grade level, so you have the building here, then you have the parking, and then the hatching denotes the fact that on top of this is a second story and a third story of office space. For the subsurface parking, there's a line, it's hard to see it, it goes along here, kind of along there, and then comes down. Anthony, able to zoom in a little more, or that's the limit? I think that's the limit, but it's pointed out here as limit of subsurface parking structure. It's like a dashed line. Oh, there you go. So, that would be this dashed line that I'm trying to follow right now, is the subsurface parking structure.
And so, it's an actual structure? I don't see it on the architectural, so, but is it a structural?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So, when you enter, you'll enter the site from East Veterans, you'll come around the building, and here you have a ramp going down to the subsurface structure, and yes, it is a structure.
Yeah, because I was at the site, so I did, did kind of go around it, and I'm just trying to figure out exactly where it would go.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Where is the EV parking spaces going to be?
So, we're showing them right now on the front of the site, along the front here, in addition to a few more over here.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Yep, well, we need them, because I was waiting for anybody else. Mr. Peters. Yeah, right. Had to get dressed up to come.
Just a couple, going back to the, to the underground parking garage, the people that are using that is just the tenants.
Correct.
I want the traffic testimony come forth before any made comments about that. It's a unique thing, I've never seen this before, and I question the accessibility of the same- the same issues that the, I think the police department raised, when somebody gets in there, if they're a tenant, maybe that makes it a little bit better, but I think it's kind of like, you know, a difficult situation. But I'll let the traffic testimony come. But along those lines, how do you handle stormwater drainage that gets into this underground parking garage?
Yeah, so, the first thing is to make sure, try to make sure that doesn't get in there. So, the grading that we have right by the entrance to the garage, it slopes away from that entrance. Anything that falls doesn't go right down that ramp, instead it goes away from the building at that entrance. That's the first step. And then any water that somehow makes its way in there, attracts in there, there will be drains, MEP I think designs them, and I think they, I believe they tie into the foundation drain for the building itself.
I don't think it's indicated on the plan, but when we relocated the infiltration basin in the front to the side, that was just for roof area runoff.
Correct.
But if now you're connecting the drainage or the runoff from the subsurface, which will be motor vehicle, basically, you're tying that into the, what I heard just then, was it the roof drain system or the building's drainage?
No, no, the foundation drain, like the architect designs, usually either inside the foundation or outside the foundation, they call it a toe drain, kind of to catch any stormwater that starts rising up, you know, they catch that. Sometimes there's a sump pump for it if it's a lot of water, I don't anticipate it being anything significant.
But these facilities will eventually be detailed somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, when supporting calculations?
Of course.
Does the ramp have a roof?
The ramp down? The building is on top of it.
The building is on top, okay. The applicant, I had indicated that an environment impact statement, well, a complete environmental impact statement was required but wasn't provided, I have since gotten that document. But bottom line on the whole thing, as far as the environmental issues go, is subject to review by the environmental commission. So, they'll have the ultimate say, decide, is this EIS good enough, does it need to do more? So, I just want to remind the board that we do have a environmental commission, is now up and running. So, you know, they'll address any environmental concerns. The island width, 10, puts the minimum, but you need, you're looking for a waiver for that. Why?
So, we're, yeah, it's this one island in the rear, the reason why it gets narrow is so that we have that space for the trash enclosure and the three additional parking spaces over here. Visually, you still, you know, towards the end caps, we still are providing the 10 feet width on the, towards the end.
If you made those islands comply, what would happen to the parking?
Well, we'd lose those three spaces and the trash enclosure would be a problem.
And then you would need additional relief from the board for that deficiency in the parking?
Correct.
So, the reason to not provide the 10-foot is so you could get those three stalls, so you can get the fuller area that you're looking for.
Yes.
Thoughts on why there's a 10-foot width in the ordinance that requires that? If this was like an industrial site, and this is kind of a little pet peeve of my, industrial sites, trucks, contractors and that, fine, we can get away with a painted island, something reduced, but in my mind, the ordinance calls for this, is maybe more aesthetics. And I had a brief conversation with the forester, and, you know, Sherry had indicated that, well, something less than 10 feet, the plants might have a little hard time, you know, thriving. But, you know, that's my two cents on that. That's all for now.
So, what about making, I can see some concerns all around on this relatively new situation to us, which is the subterranean parking. What about making that for tenants only? And then-
Yeah, we already agreed to that.
And that's, and that would, only agreeing to tenants only, then it would relieve us of some of the concerns of the public. So, I think that would be something we have to make sure that's in our documentation.
Agreed.
Anything else from anyone else? You're next.
Thank you. Mr. Back, thank you for your testimony, well-presented.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on the waiver request for the landscape island with the waiver request for continuous parking spaces. Is there anything physically on the site that limits your ability to provide three contiguous parking spaces in all locations?
So, as I testified, the one-
The microphone, please, thank you.
The one on the north, debatable, it's kind of in line with the rest of them, we have some striping in between, and that's really the only one on the surface that has two as opposed to three. The rest of the locations are the subsurface parking garage, which, again, is a function of where the columns are for the building.
So, sort of two answers, one has to do with subsurface, and the board can review that, the one on the surface is just to maximize the yield, correct?
Yes.
We are one extra.
Yeah, we have one extra.
The loading space, it's a parallel parking space on the other side of the parking aisle from the building. I can think of a few better layouts, if your testimony is that we're going to have UPS-style deliveries, and the owner can sort of limit the types of vehicles that come to the site, you can't circulate a tractor-trailer through here, can you?
No.
So, we're reasonably sure you're not going to get a tractor-trailer with office furniture in it-
Right.
-every time someone does a tenant fit up. So, let's think of a practical solution from the board. My concern is that wherever the smaller 3,000 square foot portion of the building that's at grade, that has the parking around it, is there any place in there you can dedicate a loading area for UPS trucks, like many of the office buildings that you see nowadays that might be this size? Is there any place where we can make one a little deeper, a little wider, maybe provide two of them? And, because having it across the aisle isn't the greatest idea, having it parallel ain't the optimal idea, and quite frankly, unless you barricaded it or striped it, someone's going to park in it. When we run out of, when they got to go drive around the back of it, they're going to park there, they're premium spaces, quite frankly. So, while it may require some give and take, and Mr. Back's design does not appear to require relief, I think there may be a better design available as a, from a practical perspective. And perhaps, if the board were to act in the affirmative, it could be worked out post-approval. They just, having a parallel parking space on the opposite side of the aisle, probably one of lesser designs we'd want to have, unless I'm missing the intent of that design.
We, I agree with both of those points, we did originally want it to be really along the building, I mean, and you have access straight to the building. The concern there is, you have a building above you, and you're coming in with delivery trucks, I'm scared of those getting, hitting the building, you know, height-wise.
It wouldn't be that tall, they're not, they're box trucks, are they going-
It depends on which portion of the building you're under. If you're towards the front of the building, which is where the door is at, the difference in elevation from that, let's call it, which is really the second story, to grade is less than when you get towards the back over here, where the grade drops down.
And you're alternating these with the handicap parking? It looks like they're handicap parking in the middle of those.
The handicap parking are the spaces over here, closest to the front door.
Right, okay.
What is the height you're planning for the maximum truck?
I don't, I researched it when we were doing it, I don't remember, it slipped my mind right now. Say again?
16 foot?
That sounds tall.
That's what I meant.
I don't think, I don't think it was 16.
Could we know what the sub, space to accommodate the receiving? So, it's off the surface.
I don't think I can answer that on the spot, I'd have to go through the numbers.
Does 13.6 sound about right?
That does sound right, yeah.
Do we think that it might be a wise idea for you to confer with our professionals on possible solutions for this, even, would that be agreeable?
Yes, my initial concern was that if Mr. Back's design took into account the strict ordinance requirement of a loading space being what we perceive to be a tractor-trailer, 12 by 50 or something, you can't get tractor-trailers in here, I don't need a 12 by 50 tractor-trailer loading space. So, what can we get? So, they may have put that loading space there so that it meets the ordinance requirements, and they didn't need to ask for relief. That being said, I think there's some wiggle room to come up with a more practical design once you figure out what's going on with the height of the building, and if there's a main entrance door someplace, let's try to get one loading space as close to that as possible, just like you do with handicap accessibility.
That recommendation is appropriate, and we'll make that-
The applicant agrees to a condition of approval?
Yes.
And we can work that out during resolution complaints?
Yep, sounds good, thank you. Now, just to confirm, would that mean we designate, say, two regular spaces as pull-in spaces for loading and unloading, and then this area would not be designated as a loading area anymore?
I would think if, after consultation with your client and the architect, you can get parking spaces for loading, I'm sorry, if you can get spaces for loading closer to the building, then the space that's currently shown as loading could be turned into good old-fashioned surface parking spaces. Yes. And my last comment was just, I have to do this because I represent the board, the waiver of the EIS was relatively thorough, however, I think needs to be this testimony on the record, sheet nine of your plan, the tree removal plan indicates that no trees are going to be saved, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, that's all I have.
But you're working with our arborist?
Correct.
Yeah, she's thorough.
Anything further for this gentleman? Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. So, has the forester issued a review letter? I don't have it currently with me.
We did not get one.
Okay.
I got one, I think, an hour before, before I left to here.
I have not seen it.
That's, neither have I, that's why I asked, yeah.
I saw a email from her.
So, based upon that, the applicant agrees to take all of her recommendations into consideration, and if anything needs to be resolved, you can come back and take care of it, correct?
Correct, yes.
The reason I brought it up is respectfully, the testimony said, well, it was wood portion in the back of the project. There's no trees being saved on site. And that's okay, you're entitled to do that, but you have to do certain other things, either replacement trees, pay into a fund, and since we don't have the report of the forester, we really didn't get much testimony, other than we'll comply with the forester. So, we don't really know what the answer to that question's going to be. But I needed it to be on the record that there are no trees to be saved as part of the plan, the project.
Right.
I didn't mention it, we do have, I believe that the ordinance requires, we're removing 38 significant trees, and we're replacing them with 75, so, as the ordinance.
Good point.
But the applicant's going to agree with any recommendations the forester makes?
Yes.
And with the fire official, did we receive a letter back from the fire official?
Yeah, we had a fire official letter. That fire, it was dated June 12th.
Okay. And the applicant agrees to take care of all the conditions listed in the-
Yep, yes.
-fire alert?
Yes.
Madam Chair? Just go real quick to the forester and her recommendations, what happens if the recommendations come back that the islands need to be a minimum of 10-foot wide?
I don't think I saw that in there.
I didn't either, but as far as if the recommendation comes, and you just indicated we will comply with all the forester's recommendations, if one of her recommendations is to make them 10 feet wide, what happens?
Well, we might be able to pick up additional parking spaces where we're getting rid of the loading area, and then maybe we can put the 10-foot wide islands there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So, that's a discussion point?
Correct.
Excellent.
And then this last thing, how are you going to prevent any people coming there to go into the building who are not employees to go into the underground parking area? Is there a, is there anything stopping them?
I think we probably could put a sign up, or we can have some kind of swipey card, so you can only get in there with a gate.
Maybe a card system, something to prevent regular people from going down there?
Because there will be, will be a closure of that, it's not open. There'll be an entry block, some kind of arm.
Some kind of access system.
Yeah, so the bike couldn't drive on there myself.
Yeah, just so it's only employees, yeah.
All right, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call up our architect, please.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear, affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, please state your name and spell your last on the record.
My name is-
It's happened?
On the bottom.
Yep, there it is.
My name is Luz Delmar Rosado, and my last name is spell, R-O-S-A-D-O.
And please, just your credentials to the record?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I work for a company called Star Design, which is the architects of this project, associate principal of the company, been there for 11 years, practiced architecture for 25 years or more, graduated from Virginia Tech with a master's in architecture, and I've been accepted as a witness in various jurisdictions in across the state of New Jersey.
Welcome, we accept your credentials, thank you.
Thank you. And if you could, Luz, for the record, just indicate that your firm prepared the architectural floor plans and elevations?
That is correct.
And if you could just describe the proposed building, and if you're going to reference any of the exhibits, just identify them for the record, please.
Yes. The exhibits that I will present, that will be noted as A7.
Okay, Anthony, if you could pull up A7, please? It's up.
Yes, so, the, the exhibits are the architectural floor plans of the building. I'll start with explaining the organization of the building on page two. If this can be, yes. This page has all the various floor plans of the building, starting on the left side. As you know, this is a three-story building with a under-grade parking structure, parking garage. This building will be fully sprinkler, including the garage and the building above. The first floor plan on the left is the ground floor plan. On the ground floor plan, there is a lobby, it's kind of shaded purple, if you can see, and the front door to the building is facing East Veterans Highway. Front door to the building right here. In this area of the lobby, it is envisioned to have a small coffee area for the, as an amenity to the tenants and visitors of the project. In this area, there will be two sets of elevator that connects every floor of the building. These two elevators will comply with any applicable building codes as regard of size and location. There will also be two sets of stairs, one located here and the other one located here for egress, and will meet all required applicable building codes. There will be stand pipes in these stairs, as required for the prior department, and they will be located in both stairs. As you go up, actually, the second and third floor are here, all the way to the right, this is the office space on both floors. There will be space for multiple tenants. As each tenant is secure, they will design their own space and fit out, therefore, the interior of the space right now is not visible on the floor plan. However, we know that the elevators, utilities, mechanical, and service core areas will be located towards the center of the building as depicted in the exhibit. Moving down, in the middle of the exhibit, it is the basement level, under-grade parking Moving down in the middle of the exhibit, it is the basement level, under-grade parking garage, which it was described was being accessed from the south face of the building through a ramp. This has already provided testimony. These spaces in the basement will be assigned for tenants and employees of the building. There will be lighting on the basement garage that will meet all applicable codes for life and safety and for the safety of vehicle and users of the building. So that describes the floor plan of the buildings and the organization. I'll move to the next exhibit, page number And I'll describe the building height. The building complies with the maximum building height of 85 feet. That's maximum height. There is, there was a question in one of the review letters about compliance as in regard to the parapets. The parapets of the building are in compliance with section 244-156, which allows these features to go four feet above the maximum building height. And that is, you can see right here, this red line is where it shows the maximum height those can be, and the parapets located there. In addition to that, the elevator overruns and stair overruns may go up to 15 feet in height above the maximum building height. And as you can see, they're shown here in the section in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And any mechanical, any mechanical equipment will be limited to six feet above the building height, above the maximum building height, to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Altogether, these roof structures will cover no more than 20% of the surface of the roof as required by the zoning ordinance and to stay in compliance.
While we're on that subject, solar ready?
Yes, that's what I was going to describe next. We do show some solar panels in our roof plan. These are shown for illustrative purposes only. At this stage, these are conceptual, and the intent to show this is to demonstrate that the building may accommodate this in the future if ownership would like to pursue that. If they do, they will approach a professional in the matter that will design that system. The next exhibit on page six. I will move to the architectural character and materials of the building. Next page, page six. One more. This is a perspective rendering of the building. The design intent was simple. We wanted to design something that was modern, unique, and elegant with geometry, geometrical articulation, and color blocking of the materials. We use a wood tone panel type material to add accent at the corner of the building. Here, this adds warmth and texture to the color palette. In contrast, we use white and dark color stucco to accentuate the massing of the building and keep that geometrical modern design. For windows, we use groupings of vertical and horizontal manner to the building to add rhythm through the design and the facade. Privacy was really important to ownership and the use, so we did not want to design a building that had large expanses of glass. We want to be designing something that has more, you know, less quantity of glass. The ground floor is the base of the building. It's, you can see through the areas that are parking with columns holding the building above. We add glazing at the entry for transparency and so that the entry to the building is notable from the street. And that, it's the design techniques that we use to design the building. And this is a good exhibit to show the signs of the building, which is, which I would describe. The building, we are proposing one wall sign to be located here, right above the entry. This sign is going to be 80 square feet in dimension, and it will not be mounted over 25 feet in height from the floor to the top of the sign to be in compliance of the zoning regulation. There is going to be street numbers and directional signage in the building that will direct the users to either the garage or to the entrance of the building. And these directional signs will be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And that finalizes my testimony. Any questions that you may have, I'm happy to.
Mr. Solomon.
Will there be any signage at the entrance of the parking lot?
Yes, if you go to page number five. Right here is the location of the parking garage. There is a sign here for directional purpose that denotes the entry to the garage.
Okay. And on the entrance from East Veterans on the roadway, would there be any signs marking the entrance?
If you go to page number six. The signage will be right above the entrance to the building here.
Okay, that's a wall sign. So you're asking about an entrance sign. They hadn't planned one. If they do one, they'll just do one consistent with the ordinance.
Okay.
Would you always have the street number on the face of the building?
Yes.
Mr. Marza.
Can you tell me, I know that you don't know how many tenants there are going to be, but do you have any idea of the maximum number of offices that you were kind of thinking about would be in this space?
Not as the architect, that would not be a question for her. We can ask the applicant.
Okay.
Anyone else?
What kind of, what kind of fire suppression system are you going to have in the subgarage? What kind of fire suppression system is going to be in the subgarage?
The building will be fully sprinkler on the basement and on the...
Will there be a separate FTC to feed the, I'm asking if they're separated. So is the building going to have one suppression system and the subgarage have another, or it will be one system?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that it will comply with whatever requirements from the fire department and building codes.
And he looked at these plans last, you said, June of this year?
I'm sorry?
June of this year is the last time the official approved those plans?
That's the date of his report.
That's the date of his report, June of this year. Thank you.
Mr. Clea.
Thank you for the testimony. I think Mr. Back had indicated, I'm going through the drainage in the stormwater that might get into the subterranean basement area. How's that handled?
There will be typically in the basement garage, there are drains located in multi-place. Now, there will be an engineering, an engineer that will design that system at building permit that will have all the details for that. Other than, I now understand that there will be a drainage system for the parking garage. That's a testimony that I can provide.
I'm just wondering where this drainage, where this collection system goes? Where does it discharge? And I guess an engineer, I think, will worry or will think about it later. It's a concern. If it was a surface parking lot, the oils and the grease, you know, it has to go when you have them on here, manufactured treatment devices. Is this going to need that? And should we have that design assured that it works?
I would suggest that you have an engineer get in touch with Mr. Clea to have whatever that engineer has designed be approved by you.
And that's fine, that's fine. Just missing on the plan, and it's a concern.
It's not here. We can't see it, so.
We know that there are plenty of underground garages, and so there's a mechanism to get it done.
Not in Jackson.
Okay.
So, you know, we have to, we have to go by, we don't like to fly by the seat of our pants here. We'd like to see it. So we'll make sure that Mr. Clea has that opportunity.
Sure, not a problem.
Mr. Peters.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. You've indicated that you're going to comply with the height limitations in 244-156 of our ordinance. On page three of your drawings, I think was where you showed a lot of the dimensions. Lightly started to show stair extensions or HVAC units. They're not detailed at all, so I guess the board would take it from your testimony that you're going to comply with section 244-156, the height limitations. And I guess counselor will note in the record that no relief for building height is being proposed, and the applicant is testifying they're going to comply with the height limitations in 244-156 because they're not dimensioned or labeled on these plans. So while I don't doubt the testimony, I think it just needs to be clear that if we come back later, it's like, oh, we kind of forgot that. It's not something that can be approved through resolution compliance. You've got to come back. You're going to be in violation of the code.
Understood.
The last question I had, it appears all of the, the two stair wells go all the way through the roof. Is the roof designed for occupancy, for folks to go up there and hang out, or are the stairs going up to the roof just part of the design? Or is it anticipated that tenants in this building will have free and ready access to utilize the roof of the building?
Typically, we bring stairs up for maintenance, so there was easy access to go into the roof for maintenance of equipment and so forth.
I guess Ms. Jennings is going to need some testimony from the applicant. Are they proposing to have tenants utilize the roof?
No, the answer is no, and we would make that a condition of the approval. That's for maintenance only.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And the applicant understands that the stormwater management plan is going to be a condition of the approval, correct?
For the underground garage, correct.
No roof access, other than maintenance. Any other questions? Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call up our traffic engineer, John Ray. This is his first time appearing.
Yes, we missed him.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell it for the record because we have no idea who you are.
John Ray, RDA, professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates, specialty is traffic engineering. Appeared before this board many times.
You've been here a few times. Does the board accept the credentials?
We certainly do.
Thank you. John, if you could, just confirm that your office prepared a traffic impact analysis dated May 28, 2025?
Yes, we did.
And you had an opportunity to visit the site and the surrounding area?
On numerous occasions, yes.
Okay, if you could just describe for us your, the analysis that you undertook and your conclusions.
Okay. Well, we've been at the site on several occasions to look at this particular piece of property, look at the surrounding roadway network. As everybody knows, it is located on the south side of East Veterans Highway, which is Ocean County, which is 528. In the vicinity of the site, East Veterans Highway has one travel lane in each direction along the shoulders on both sides of the road, and a two-way left turn lane which extends to the intersection of South Oak Chapel Road and provides access to the various driveways in the area, including Pride Parkway, which is the access to Jackson Liberty High School and to the Liberty Corners Shopping Center, as well as Jackson Carson Shopping Center. East Veterans Highway, as I've indicated, is under the jurisdiction of Ocean County. An application has been made to the county. Our engineer has gotten some preliminary comments from the county. They are relatively minimal. So I believe the county is pretty much on board with the design of the project. If I'm not mistaken, the county had asked us to shift the original location of the driveway further to the west. We had more separation from the driveway shopping center on the side of the street, and we have done that. Traffic counts were conducted last September when Jackson Liberty High School was open and generating traffic. The council conducted an intersection of Pride Parkway and East Veterans Highway. One of those traffic counts, we were able to get peak hour traffic volumes passing the site runage, East Veterans Highway. We did traffic generation estimates from the 11th edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And the project will generate approximately, based on the size of the project and the midst of medical and general office space, it will generate approximately 70 peak hour driveway movements during the AM peak street hour and 79 peak hour movements during the PM peak street hour. We projected traffic volumes to a design year of 2035, according to those who can claim protocol. They always want to look at it 10 years horizon when they're doing a traffic study. We consulted the NJBOP's background traffic flow rate data. We added that background traffic flow rate to the East Veterans Highway traffic volumes. We also included several projects in the vicinity of the site that have been approved, yet to be constructed. And we did those traffic studies. We included that traffic in our projection of design year 2035 traffic volumes. We calculated the levels of service for the exit windows out to East Veterans Highway for the morning and afternoon peak hours. Lewis levels of service will be level of service D is in David for the AM peak street hour and C, as in Charlie, for the PM peak street hour. And that's primarily because the AM peak street hour volumes in East Veterans Highway are a little bit higher than the PM peak street hour volumes. We live in an unusual situation. That fact is the case. With respect to Jackson Liberty High School across the street, I do not anticipate that the peak hours for the office building would coincide directly with the peak hours for the high school. The high school starts at 7:10 a.m. in the morning, which is a little bit earlier than I believe most people would be arriving at their offices during the morning peak hour. And in the afternoon, middle of school is discussed at 1:33 p.m. And we expect our peak hour to recur a couple hours after that generally between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. But at any rate, the site driveway to East Veterans Highway is operational, like I said, at a D and C level of service, expectedly for the 2035 design year. We expect in the design of the internal circulation, there's been some testimony on that already from the engineer and the architect. We do have 184 parking spaces shown, which is one space more than is required. The total of 283 is the number that's required to include parking requirement. I have sat and listened to the comments from your professionals regarding the location of the loading zone. I think Mr. Back and myself can work with your professionals to relocate the loading zone, replace that area with basic surface parking, and we can probably work something out to get that loading zone a little bit more accessible to the front door of the building, which certainly makes sense. As far as the subterranean parking level is concerned, there are 54 parking spaces down there, if I'm not mistaken. I've discussed that with my applicant, and my suggestion was, and it came up this evening, that we restrict the underground parking garage to tenants and employees. We don't want the general public going down there. And we will do that for signage, if need be, apart from a gate, you know, some kind of a key fob that can get you into the bottom of the car. a gate, you know, some kind of a keep bob that can get you into the bottom of the parking garage. I think we've all probably had experience going into underground parking garages. I only knew of Jackson Township. This may be the first one. But assuming it's designed properly and correctly, it will work so efficiently. Outside of that, I think the project's been properly designed. We do have minimal comments from the county. I do expect the county approval for the rotation of the driveway based on their comments. And once again, just to remind everybody and as well as the public, that with respect to the traffic impact at off-site intersections, the county will collect a real substantial traffic impact plea from this applicant going to the county's traffic fund, which funds traffic improvements throughout the county, including projects that are on construction right now in Jackson Township, such as Cedar Swamp and Freehold Road, if I'm not mistaken. There's a signal of some widening going in there.
Butterfly.
And the improvements that were done at Forest Forest a year or two ago. So we will have to make a contribution to the county's traffic impact fund.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ray? Well done. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I really did. I came here.
You know, I'm just not looking this way.
It's Monday night. At my house on Monday night is laundry night. If I get home early, I have to fold laundry, okay?
Not football night. No football tonight.
Mr. Ray, thank you as always for your testimony. Seeing as how your firm did their usual thorough job in the report dated May 28 of 2025, I need to beat you over the head a little bit with it. The report indicates that there's a level of service E at an off-site intersection.
At Pride Parkway, correct.
And in your firm's conversations with the county, are you aware of any intersection improvements that are proposed for that area, which is relatively close to your site?
That's the access to the high school. They have not indicated unless Mr. Back, our engineer, has gotten some different information from the county. We've not gotten any information from the county that any improvements would be proposed there.
The reason I'm asking, and I don't want to necessarily go page by page through your report, is that that level of service over there is a level of service E. And it's about, in technical terms, half a second from being a level of service F. And at some point in time, the county, and I guess I'm going to ask you a question. If your report or the county's report had indicated there was a level of service F, would you have expected the county to ask for some sort of improvements at that site, not by your applicant? But at some point, when you have, when you cross some threshold from an engineering perspective, wouldn't there be some sort of intersection improvements performed?
I think to answer your question, Mr. Peters, not necessarily intersection improvements. I don't think the county will approve the signal of Pride Parkway. It would be too close to Cross Street and too close to the South Oak Chapel Road. What they probably asked us to do is to do a gap study. And it's my belief that, and I know the area fairly well, we've been doing traffic work out here for many, many years. Because of the signals at South Oak Chapel Road and Cross Street, with bracket being beside the Pride Parkway, I do think gaps are provided that aren't necessarily taken into account in the analysis and the level of service analysis. So I think it's going to work out fine. There are improvements scheduled by the county, the Cross Street and East Veterans Highway, as everybody will know. It's going to be a big improvement to that intersection. And I think the signal there will provide some gaps in westbound East Veterans Highway traffic before the Cross Street traffic starts to move. And that's why I can answer the question is, the county may at some point in time do a gap study out there and make sure there are gaps for people to get out of Pride Parkway. But at this juncture, they are not going to require a signal. It's too close to Cross Street.
I have to agree with your concern there because there's been a great population change at that intersection. Because of the high schools combining, there is, that high school has a much larger population now than it did when you did that study.
You're correct, Dr. Campbell. Are the high schools combined now in 2025, September of this year?
So that's a concern. And I think the county would hopefully be aware of that.
No, I appreciate you expanding your testimony. I know you're familiar with the area. And I think it gives the board a little more understanding about what goes on at the next intersection's offsite. Not that necessarily your client is the application that tips the scales, but I think having an understanding of what's going on out there is important. I don't know if it was your testimony or Mr. Back's. Was there an original design that had the driveway access further east on this property?
Yes, there was.
And the county put the kibosh on that?
The county asked us to move it further west. And actually, the Jackson Police stated the same comment, asked us to move it further west.
When you should talk about Jackson Police. So they have a report dated July 29. There are some comments in here that I think require at least a recognition by the applicant of the comments made by the PD Traffic Safety Unit, or some agreement that you'll meet with them to reconcile the concerns in the letter.
I have reviewed that report. There are some general comments about heavy traffic and congestion in the area, which of course, we concur that that's the case. They also indicate that, do I have the latest one? This is dated 7/29/25, turning this?
Yes. It's some critical comments on the second page, the full paragraph.
Subterranean parking garage?
Yes.
Okay. That's why we're going to, you know, the subterranean parking garage is going to be restricted to tenants and employees. So I understand the comment. We don't want the general public being down there. They will use the surface parking through signage and if necessary, a gate or some kind of a keep bob system to get the authorized people down there. We agree to do that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I would, I would take out the term if necessary.
Okay.
It will.
I think we know what we have to do.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Cle? I do have one question, maybe not for Mr. Ray, concerning that coffee bar. That's no food prep there, right? Just coffee?
Correct.
No lunch, no, wanted to make sure nobody was going to be wandering in there for lunch.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to be clear, there's no EV parking spaces or charging stations in the underground facility, right?
No.
I know that.
Yeah.
Fire department doesn't like.
We don't want any big bonfires.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
And just to be clear, if the county comes back and indicates that, let's say they do a study, and they're going to require some kind of improvements in the roadway, the applicant would be responsible to pay their fair share, correct?
We always are. We have to pay the county impact fee.
Right.
And also maybe Mr. Back may be able to give me more details. There's probably going to be a little bit of dedication that the applicant could count.
Yeah.
Which isn't part of the traffic impact fee, but still have to pay.
Right. All right.
Okay. At this time, I'll call Andrew Janu, our planner.
Good evening.
Long time no see. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Andrew Janu, J-A-N-I-W.
All right. And your credentials?
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal in the firm of Beacon Planning and Consulting Services located in Colts Neck, New Jersey, currently serving as the planner for the borough of Prehold in Monmouth County, Carteret Borough, and Middlesex County, and Livingston Township in Essex County. 2022, I was appointed to the State Board of Professional Planners by.
I think that may be good enough.
Sounds good enough. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just Andrew, for the record, you've had an opportunity to visit the site?
Been to the site several occasions, have reviewed all the documentation, the review letters, the plans prepared for this evening, as well as your ordinance and master plan.
Okay. And you understand the variance that is requested in the design waivers? And if you could just go through the statutory requirements and indicate whether or not in your professional opinion, the applicant has satisfied same?
Certainly. So as the board's aware, this is in your highway commercial district. It's a very generous commercial district. I believe there are 75 permitted uses within that district, including professional offices, which by definition include medical and dental uses. The ordinance specifically permits using parking configuration that we are proposing with the EV threads. The sole variance that we're seeking this evening is for a setback to the parking area where 20 feet is required adjacent to a residential use. We are providing 10 feet to the residential use, and that is along our eastern property line. I believe our engineer had gone through the various waivers that we're requesting. I won't reiterate those, because they're generally related to the configuration of the parking spaces and the circulation aisles, and he given you the engineering reasoning behind all those statutory requirements for the variance we're looking at in C2, or we would do the payment for a balance test. With respect to the waivers, I would offer that those are typically considered to be, based on the test we provided, a better alternative to compliance in order to provide the appropriate circulation and parking requirements to meet the ordinance requirements of the township. When preparing for this evening, one of the things I had mentioned I had done is go over your master plan. And we certainly have to reconcile anything that we do with your master plan. With respect to your master plan, it's very, which has been done 2025, it's very specific with respect to wanting to promote new commercial development. And in fact, the policies, principles, and objectives within the master plan included, I'll read this in the record, to achieve a pattern and mix of land uses that achieve various community planning objectives, including the economic development of the community and creation of a living world desirable community, provide for commercial development to serve both local and regional needs, mentor with the demands of the market, based on both reliable and innovative market strategies, to provide limited appropriate non-residential development, including but not limited to neighborhood businesses, professional offices, religious uses, while protecting the character of the neighborhoods, to provide for sustainable economic growth in Jackson by capitalizing on the patterns of the location and the region and its existing and in our case, and to encourage local business development. I believe we are on point with each of those objectives. We are proposing professional office uses and those other uses that are permitted through the HC district at this location. In an appropriate location.
Sorry, your microphone's off. I'm just stirring.
Sorry.
Is that better? Ah, there we go.
Yep, much better.
My apologies. We are proposing uses that are consistent with the zone plan. We are promoting economic development within the town in an appropriate location. That also brings us to the purposes of zoning. And as this board is aware, variances cannot be granted for the sole benefit of the applicant. There has to be a public purpose. Those public purposes are defined within the municipal land use law under 4055D. And I believe they're too specific that we are consistent with here. G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreation, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey residents. We are zoned for the use that's being proposed. We are in appropriate location, and we have sufficient space for what's being proposed. And as you heard our engineers' testimony, we don't have any environmental constraints on this property. Even the limited EAS that was submitted indicated there are no wetlands or any kind of constraints that would prohibit this development or otherwise have any consequences to the environment. M is to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures, such as the sports actions and activities shaping land development, with a view of lessening the cost of such development to the more efficient use of land. And again, this property has been developed with a dental office for many years. What we're seeking to do is to now enhance the development with a professional office building that may include medical and dental uses. It is appropriately located along the highway commercial zone and the highway commercial district. We have infrastructure available in terms of road frontage and access to public water, public sewer. So it is an area which such development would be efficiently placed. And that brings us to the criteria for the variance itself. What we are proposing is what's known as a flexible C variance or the balance test. And under the proofs for a C2 variance, we would have to demonstrate that the application relates to a specific piece of property, and it does. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the application. And I believe that there are at least two that would, that I read into the record. And finally, that the benefits of the deviation would outweigh any detriment. We'd also have to reconcile this with the negative criteria, being that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. So the variance we are seeking this evening is related to the setback along the easterly property line. Can we put up, I think it's, yeah, there we go. So the easterly property line will be to the right of the outermost yellow line on this property. You see, there are two residential lots within the HC zone, 1164 and 1174 is how they're depicted on there. 1174 is a larger lot. The home is actually beyond our southerly property line. The white roof by the 1174 there is more of a barn or storage use, and there's some outdoor storage occurring on the property. And 1164 is a single-family home. There is a natural wooded buffer there. So there is vegetation that does separate us. However, we are required to maintain pursuant to your zone at 20-foot setback. Now, the 20-foot setback within the requirements of the ordinance is just that, it's a setback. It's not required to be planted or buffered with any fences. However, because we're asking for that deviation, I think there was a suggestion from chairperson that we would enhance that with a fence as well as some landscaping. We are prepared to do that to mitigate that visual, call it impairment of the 10-foot encroachment into the setback requirement. With respect to that, that I actually believe would be superior to a 20-foot setback in that we are creating a visual barrier, something that will block headlights, something that will have not much, but some noise attenuation, certainly more than what the minimum 20-foot setback requirement would be. So I believe what's being proposed with the fence and with the landscaping is superior to that 20-foot setback. And I think when we look at that on balance, that certainly is a better zoning alternative. With respect to the negative criteria here, I think if we, it's my opinion that if we do that and enhance that buffering, if you will, between the property lines, that there won't be any negative impacts on this property. In fact, it'll be, as I mentioned, superior to the 20-foot setback requirement. We are consistent with the zone plan in terms of putting in appropriate use in its appropriate location. And I believe that we have satisfied essentially the mitigation of the impact of that deviation on the neighbors. Mr. Beck had indicated with respect to the waivers, that we can certainly work with your professionals in terms of trying to reconcile some of the issues that were raised with respect to the two parking spaces in the northeast corner of the property, as well as to the 10-foot islands around the dumpster area. Certainly, there may be opportunities to mitigate some of those waivers with whence we can relocate or look at relocation of the loading area along the westerly property line. So there, I believe quite frankly, that even the design as exists today is functional. It works. It allows for proper circulation, and we meet the parking requirement. But that doesn't mean it can't be improved if we have the benefit of an improved loading area. So when we look at the waivers, I do think that they do meet the, call it, benefit test of a better zoning alternative in terms of the impact with respect to circulation. But like I said, we're going to try to improve that in order to satisfy some of the board's concerns. And I believe that is the limit of my testimony.
Thank you, Andrew.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Peters?
Certainly want to avoid folding laundry tonight. I don't take any exception to Mr. Janu's testimony.
Professional first.
I think the technical portions of the waiver requests and the discussion with regards to variance relief were presented by the witnesses. And again, I don't take any exception to Mr. Janu's testimony this evening.
Mr. Cle?
Nothing more to add.
I just want to, who is going to be speaking about the, speaking to the statement of operations? Or do I just have to take what has been written?
I believe that the site engineer went through the hours of. I believe that the site engineer went through the hours of oper, we don't know who the tenants are, so he did go through the general hours of operation and everything, so I'm not sure what you would be looking for. The tenants are not identified yet.
Right, and I just wanted to know approximately, you know, what they're anticipating as far as how many offices there would be, what standard business hours are. There is also an accommodation for 24-hour secure access for the tenants of the building. So in order to, you know, consider the C2 variance, I would like to make sure that some of these things are addressed, so that I know that the 10-foot buffer request and the fence and the landscaping will be enough. So is there anyone that can testify to that, or am I just to say the standard business hours are what exactly?
Well, that's, that's what they are, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, but the building would be open, like, I'm, I'm an attorney, right? So we have a professional office building. I go there, tomorrow, yesterday I was there, because I have access, but I was the only person in an 11-story building. So most people aren't going to go there on Saturdays and Sundays after the hours, and that's, they have a lot of work to do, and they need to get to their files. So I would imagine that, yes, you'll have the ability to go to the building, but not that many people are going to go to the building. Like even this building right now, it's a public building. We're probably the only ones in the building, because we have a purpose to be here. So that's generally how office buildings work. They're, and it's medical office, so it's really the doctors. They're only going to take appointments generally between 9 and 5. But I do have, I mean, Lara Schulman is the applicant's rep. If you want to ask her, I know you had a question about how many tenants, if she has an idea of how many tenants she thinks she might have, because she is running a dentist's office there right now, so there, obviously, the dentist's office that's there now is going to be in this new building. So they're going to be occupying some of the space, so if that's helpful, we can bring Lara up, and she can give a little testimony.
That'd be great.
Okay, sure. Lara, I know you didn't really want to come up, but come on up. Your time to shine.
All right. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Oh, use the microphone.
Yes.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Lara. Lara Deena Schulman, S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N.
All right. And you're going to be testifying as to state of operations based upon your personal knowledge of the existing functions, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, just for the record, can you just indicate how you're related to the applicant? Your affiliation?
I am, I am one of the owners of the building. I am the applicant. My husband and my daughter are dentists that work in the office currently. They are also owners of the property.
Okay, and the, the goal is to have their practice move into the new building, correct?
Yes.
You can sit down.
Okay, thank you. The goal is to have their practice move into the building and enlarge. Their practice is growing. Jackson is growing, and they're, they're doing great.
Okay, and do you, how many additional tenants do you anticipate? You obviously have a building that's going to be beyond their particular needs, so I imagine there'll be another tenant or two, or do you, 10, how many do you think?
We're definitely going to have three tenants. One, their office, and then two additional medical, dental-related, not related to us, but practices. And then we have family businesses. We hope to populate the office with some of our family businesses, investments, we have different investments, not in this area, but in other locations in New Jersey.
Will you just speak into the microphone?
Yes, sure. I'm sorry, thank you. We have other family businesses, and we've thought about moving some of our offices there, and perhaps, you know, other related businesses that might relate to our investment businesses, most of them financially related.
So there would be, there would be no large groups there at any time? In the evenings, say, large groups of people? Just office?
Some, so, you know what, you know what, guys? I have 12 kids. We are a large group. When we go to the dentist, we take over the whole, we take over the whole waiting room. So that's about as large as you're going to get. No, we're not planning on having public gatherings in the building. That's not the idea.
All right, that's, that's the concern, that there will be no public gatherings, that there will be no night activity as possible, as possible.
Well, our office is current, is sometimes open till 8:00 PM. Is that, is that the, is that night for you?
That would, that would be certainly evening, but we're looking at nothing like 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night.
Midnight hours don't, this is an office building, midnight hours.
Right, good. That's the concern.
Unless I'm going to have a family party.
That's the concern. No fam, no big family parties.
I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing.
If I brought all my grandchildren, I'd have a
Of course.
Very large crowd.
Exactly, you're right. We might use the parking lot on a Sunday or something. I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Mr. Marzo, would that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I have just one small question. With the underground garage potential for individuals being there at night, do you have a security system, camera system, alarm systems? Could they affect?
Yes, we will have a security system for all day, not just at night, and we'll be able to see it remotely on our phones and in other places also.
Excellent. Gentlemen, any questions? Any more questions from the board? We appreciate it, thank you.
So that's all of our direct testimony.
Any questions before we move to the public? Let's, somebody motion for the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to open the testimony to the public for cross-examination of witnesses only on this application. Sullivan.
Second, DeMarzo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you have any questions to, directed to the applicants or their professionals, please come forward.
Seeing no one coming.
Oh, somebody's coming forward. Give her time. Thank you. That's okay. Bring the microphone down closer to you, thank you.
Sure.
And just so you know, what's going to happen is that this is broken up into two parts. This part is the cross-examination part, where you're going to be asking specific questions to the applicant's professionals. And then the second part, after we close this part, is the public comment. You just feel free to say whatever you want about the application.
Okay, this is questions only.
Yeah, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Holly Reynolds, R-E-Y-N-O-L-D-S, 3 Mary Beth.
All right, and your address for the record?
3 Mary Beth.
3 Mary Beth, gotcha.
So my questions are for the engineer. So my first question is, you said that you're changing the direction or the layout of where you're having that first underground drainage basin to the side and not to the front. Would you still be piping that drainage basin out into the same area as you do now?
Yes.
Okay. I also noticed on your plans that you don't have any direct inlets from the driveways at all, directly going into the basins. You originally had one, kind of that biotension basin that kind of looked like it just filtered into the underground basin, and then discharges out. So where do you have the stormwater from the parking lot getting into?
That's a good question. In place of that bio-
Use the microphone, please, thank you.
It's working. In place of that bio-basin, in that little corner, there, there will be an inlet, and that's, that's what we were speaking about before, this MTD, it's called, where it pretreats the water. It's going to go through, it look, from above ground, it looks like an inlet.
Right.
And then it goes in there, it treats the water, and then it goes towards the rear of the property, towards that big underground system in the rear. Additionally, in the rear of the system, there's another one of those MTDs, which, again, it's an, it's an inlet on steroids. It treats the water, and then it goes into the underground system.
Is that the one you're talking about in the very back corner?
Yes.
The, the crack in, basically?
Yes, yes.
But isn't that also an outlet structure, or is that only an inlet?
No, that one's just inlet. That one's just-
So how does the water get out of the basin?
It, the, the basin itself, it's perforated pipe with stone on the bottom, so the water enters this underground basin and infiltrates into the ground.
Okay, and what happens if it doesn't infiltrate?
So we have to, we have to, in our report, we have to provide the soils department and the township engineer with that eventuality, what would happen in case of failure.
Right.
So that one, it would, that's the reason for the stone around that inlet. It would, it would bubble over and go through the stone. The stone is there to slow down the water, so it doesn't damage any of the soil in the surrounding area.
Okay, but how, you only have basically those two inlets, but overall, the whole parking lot, you only have those. So how do you get all that stormwater, or is it all just flushing into the back of the property?
Yeah, it goes from the front of the property all the way to the, to the, to the bottom of it, and that's just because of the way the property slopes in that direction.
Okay, so what I'm also seeing is that all your stormwater basically goes into the one area or one side of the property, which is basically to the residential neighbors.
Yeah.
So my question is, how do you not affect the residential neighbors when you're discharging, basically overland into that corner, or that flared end section to the front? You're hitting both those lots with all the stormwater that would fail.
No, it's a very valid point. The, the, the requirement-
Microphone.
The requirement is, there, no, it's me this time again, always me. The, the requirement is to maintain what's there now, and what's there now, the water does flow from north to south and west to east. The water is currently flowing in that direction. There isn't a lot of water. There's minimal amount of water, and even that minimal amount, we're required to reduce it when we do development, which we're doing. So any amount of water that's going to be going there now is going to be less than what's currently going there today. That's the requirement. And then the township engineer's job is to check our plans and ensure that we're complying with that.
Okay, I, I get that for like overall, that you have the water going there, but for those specific points, like, are you addressing that you're reducing the water going to those points, and you're not showing the grades off the property, and it looks like it slopes down into these people's properties? So my question is, is how are you not going to erode the, the neighboring properties from like that flared end or all that stormwater just discharging over that small area of stone?
Right. No, so I'm telling you, the, the stormwater, the design isn't for the stormwater to go out of that flared end or out of that stone. The design is for the stormwater to enter the inlet there and go into the system and go into the ground underground. You won't see it. Those, that stone is there for in case of failure, which is, that's a requirement. But these things, especially the underground ones, I don't know of any that have failed underground. They, they don't fail. And we're required to, the, the applicant is required to maintain them, and should there be a problem, you know, they are obligated to clean those out if they're, they get stuffed with leaves or whatever.
I would say that you would still need to have, you'd still need to have like that point stability of what you're doing. You're taking all this flow and you're concentrating it. So, and then you have a slope, so I'm just making sure that, you know, that you're meeting those requirements of not posing an issue to, you have two residential neighbors right there.
Yes, and we are reading.
Okay. And I guess with that, you want to have only a 10-foot buffer. I know some people may think it's just an aesthetic of, you know, putting a fence or trees to the neighboring properties, but there's probably also a design to have that ordinance to kind of limit what you're doing to those neighboring properties with stormwater as well, not just what it looks like.
Yeah, and, and again, that's the main point in stormwater design, and, and the board engineer can tell you this also, is to ensure that we're not negatively impacting the neighbors, and that's the entire focus of the design. And, and we are required to lessen the impact of what's there now.
Yes, so you have to
Yeah.
Reduce the amount of water that's going into the neighboring properties.
Yes.
Okay, I guess that's all my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing no one else.
That's okay. Take your time.
Kim Reale, R-E-
Duh, hold it. We have a whole procedure.
Hang on. Do you swear or affirm, to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Kim Reale, R-E-A-L-E, 547 West Commodore.
Uh, we just say that one more time? Yep.
R-E-A-L-E.
If you could move that microphone towards you, make it more comfortable.
And your address?
547 West Commodore.
All right, I think she got it.
Okay. I'm also concerned, I'm sorry, I'm also concerned-
Is your question for the, is your question for the engineer?
Yes. We have the buffers in place for a reason. The reason is that you have residential and commercial. You don't want to mix the two. We have these buffers there for a reason. What you're, one of the questions I actually have is, what kind of trees are on the property as of right now?
I'm not a professional arborist, but we do have a survey from an arborist that has identified each one individually.
Like, are there birches, or there willows, or, because that actually helps with the water situation. Once you cut those down, you have a water situation, because the trees aren't there absorbing the water. And then you go to, now you don't have the buffer on top of it, because you're, you said you're taking every single tree off of that property. I don't know how many there are, but you're taking all the trees off. So I can see where the residents should be concerned regarding the water situation, because without knowing what trees are there, what's absorbing the water, what isn't absorbing the water, you see lakes being destroyed and not coming back, because they ripped out trees, and the lakes are gone. So that's, I really think there should be the buffer. The buffer should be the 20 feet. You need it. You need to protect not only your property, but the properties of the residents. That's it.
Thank you. I think there was testimony about the number of trees that are being removed, and there are two or three times the number of trees being planted.
Right, but are you planting the same type of trees?
Yeah, that's the requirement.
That's a requirement.
At least equivalent, at least.
No, but if you pull a birch, are you putting a birch?
We're putting in whatever the tree forester tells us she'd like to see there, because she's the one who's the expert.
Because, because that's how it works, you know? If you chop down a weeping cherry, it sucks up water. When you chop it down, the water's coming up out of the ground. So that, that's a big concern, you know, when you're looking at, granted, we have a high water table over here. So that's an issue. When you're taking down trees, you have to make sure that whatever trees you're putting back up are going to absorb. And again, you're not putting up 30, 40-foot trees again. You're putting up baby trees. So they're not going to do the job the way that big tree's doing the job. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Anyone else?
Seeing no one else come forward, I move to close the public portion of the cross-examination on this application. Sullivan.
Second, DeMarzo.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to open the public portion of testimony on this application and this application, comments on this application only. Anyone, or, I make a motion.
Second, DeMarzo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone who would like to make any comment on this particular application, please come forward.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public portion of this application. Sullivan.
Second, DeMarzo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now.
Give your summation?
Sure, just like, guess I would just say in sum, this is a permitted use. We essentially meet all of the townships ordinance require, other than the buffer, but I think we're addressing that with the fencing and the extensive landscaping. We're obviously going to have the tree forester address the comments, and we're going to, you know, with, with respect to the water issue, we do meet the state stormwater regulations and have to, and so the water is going to be reduced, and the quality and the quantity of water will be better than it is now. So we would respectfully request that the board grant an approval.
Mr. Peters, you have any comments for us?
How about Peter?
Mr. Clay? The board, any comments?
I just would want to know how, what the, the height of the fence is and what the fence is going to be like.
Maybe we could have someone give us a, the architect? Somebody-
Well, I would think that it would just be a six-foot-high, solid, white fence.
Solid, solid, six-foot. Probably these days, it's vinyl. Yeah.
Yeah. It has to meet whatever standard is in the ordinance, yeah.
And solid, so that the whole
Yeah.
And solid, so that the whole purpose, the two purposes are sound and light. So solid will take care of that. Anyone else with a comment? Then we'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application block, 21301 Lot 12, 1154 East Veterans Highway Holdings LLC, with the stipulations that the applicant agreed to. And I'd just like to make a comment that in future, when we see renderings that the heights are marked on these renderings, so we don't have to ask what the heights are, we can see them. That would help facilitate any future applications. And with that, I motion to approve. Sullivan?
I'll second Rogers.
We'll have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Bresi?
I have not had time to review the package myself, being disappointed, and appreciate all the testimony and the public input, but without reviewing the whole package personally, I'm going to abstain on my vote.
Okay. Mr. Marzo?
Yes, and I, that includes the variance requests. I approve.
Mr. Rogers?
I would like to approve the preliminary. I have some concerns on the final, only because we're so many answers, questions, and design issues, problems, but not describing.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
So let's just talk about that for a sec. So the vote is for preliminary and final. So that's the motion that's on the floor. So that would be a no by you unless you want to change.
That would be a no by me, then.
All right. Mr. Weingart?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes, and with the agreed-upon consultation with our professionals, that's very important, and I think that will help to cover Mr. Rogers' concerns, too.
Yes.
All right. So that's a yes for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Do I, do I get a vote?
You do. We didn't, we forgot Mr. Trummer.
He's so quiet tonight.
He was so quiet.
It's okay, I'm new here.